Tony Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members that are here. And Councilman Tillman will be joining us later. Members should receive the draft minutes July 29th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Question.
Go, go.
So I think we talked about it at the meeting, but as I read through everything again, I guess for the Mountain Brook subdivision, we granted one year. We extended the plan for one year.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that my, my motion was actually in order because it doesn't say that in the code. It says we can do two, six months.
Six months, yes.
So I just wanted to, I'm pretty sure we talked about it, but I just wanted to be.
But the motion because of what was involved with the Flowserve and all of that. I think that was one reason we went for the one year.
It's good, Dan. Yeah, we just did some math.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two times six.
Yep.
That's fine. If everybody's agree with that, I'm still.
And you're right, it was six months, but we extended it to a year. Anything else?
No, that's, that's everything. Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to.
Make a motion to approve the July 29th draft minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Unanimous, you can vote. Action items for tonight. Tony Town Elementary School, pre-kid kindergarten addition. Jim Marks, Carroll County Public Schools, seeking preliminary site plan approval. Darryl, would you want to start us off then?
Sure. So at the county, you guys are used to doing concept and final. So what we're trying to do is get them more in line with their project. I think it's been a little bit of confusion with engineering and whatnot. The cool thing is we're, we're allowed to do this by way of 18110, which is where there is no subdivision of land. It's an addition. This is the perfect sort of kind of scenario to do this. So yeah, with no major changes. You see the square footage on page one.
Yep, I did notice that. And what does those, those letters stand for? F?
Oh.
Future, future funding.
So on the prints has a.
Hold on, come over, sir.
Sure. Hey, Stephanie. Um, just, just till you see the first.
Oh, that's full functional equipment. Excuse me? That's what that means. It's something close to that. It's a Phil King term. That's a, I don't know. It's either misspelling or it's a fancy planning word that I haven't seen before.
It's been consistent throughout the.
Has it? Yeah. I knew that answer for you, Jimmy. It stumped me.
Normally go by square footage.
Yes, yes.
And I didn't, when it was 500 and some FDT, whatever it is.
Fifty-two hundred or fifty-eight hundred, somewhere around there. That's where we are.
I thought that had to do with something about how many kids could be in there, right? Or how many people could be in there.
I thought it had to do with funding.
Capacity, yeah. Thank you. First floor elevation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay.
All right. He gets bonus points.
Thank you.
Wait till his turn comes.
You want me to stay? Sure.
Okay, so you're, you're seeking preliminary approval tonight, correct?
Yeah, we're, um, what, what we're trying to do is to get all the schedules. We're trying to do four additions. Now, these are the, just to refresh if people out there don't understand where we are with this, we're trying to do the full day K, okay, additions that were never done way back when we went from half day K to full day K. So these were the last four buildings. So it's you here at Tony Town, it's Friendship Valley, Cranberry Station, and Sandy Mount Elementary. Those were the four schools that never received the adequate spaces for their kindergarten spaces. A lot of the schools back then, when they came out with the program, there was limited funding, of course, but a lot of them could make do. And they would convert a regular classroom into a kindergarten classroom, but it may be substantially smaller. Let's say 800 square feet versus 1,000 plus for a kindergarten room. So that's what this project is. The good news for this area and this school is that we combined it with the upcoming blueprint pre-K. All right? So we all know that pre blueprint has a pre-K element to it that's going to increase gradually over the years as more state funding is available and the mandates become more strict. And so we'll already have your pre-K additions in with this kindergarten addition. So you're, you get first dibs here on having your pre-K addition taken care of. So we're doing it under one package. That's the basis of the project and that way we don't have to come back a second time with just a small one or two classroom pre-K addition.
Chairman, what they're looking to do is to skip the preliminary plan and go to final presentation.
All right. So my thought was this, we'll go ahead and if everybody agrees, approve preliminary and go right into a final this evening, too. To keep in our three steps that we were used to.
And, and we've taken care of all the concept plan comments, you know, without any issue or discretion. I mean, it was very easily done, no issues there. And this would help get us on schedule with the other four projects. And it, it, it helps ensure that you're right there and ready to go because we want to break ground next summer. This is a two summer project and that's our goal is to start next summer. So, which means I want to be bidding and shortlisting for contractors in December and January. And as I know, I'm getting that state funding, which it looks, looks pretty decent that we're going to get the state funding, which is the balance. We're already taking care of the county. Then we're ready to rock and roll and you guys are right there.
And how, how does this affect the capacity of the school?
It helps.
What, are we over capacity, under capacity? What's the percentage?
Existing, the state rate of capacity. I don't think you're that far over at all, but it helps. This, it's not a capacity project, so it helps them spread their wings accordingly. So a lot of times you'll have rooms that get used twice and they'll run a teacher around on a cart, you know, to take care of a, of a tight space. And so this allows them to adequately put their teachers where they need to be and not shuffle them around the school.
Okay. Any, any other comments?
So I guess, are we looking to approve the preliminary plan or waive?
No, we're going to approve the preliminary. We're going through the process just like we do all the other people who come in here.
Yeah. So it's, Dan, because this is rather unusual, but again, it's no subdivision of land, so it makes it a lot different. It's an addition, basically a nice sized addition. So they are right now, according to my council report page, I, I keep all the programs where they are. And elementary is, concept site plan is approved on May 20th, 2024. And preliminary site plans were received. And then, so anyway, what they're looking to do is present the preliminary site plan and go and knock that out here this month with a final being presented. So there'd be a.
Is there any reason why if the preliminary goes through tonight, we can't move right into the final tonight unless there's, unless we're waiting for something from the county or, or letters that we haven't received yet?
I believe so. That's, that's what I thought. That's why I said earlier. So we're, basically tonight we would approve preliminary, preliminary, and then they would be in final.
Okay.
And I assume we'd come back and present on the final? Is that what you typically do?
Since you're not going to start until spring anyway, one more month wouldn't really matter.
No, we're fine with that.
Yeah, that and the county, the project did not, was not presented to the county last month like I was, thought it was going to be. So we're, this would be even more in line.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay. Hey, anyone else have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Please state what the motion is for.
I'll make a motion to get preliminary approval.
Preliminary.
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made for approval by Barry. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of preliminary site plan approval for the Tony Town Elementary School addition, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir. We got it. We'll see you again. Take care.
Good luck.
Thanks.
How's it going, gents?
Very good.
How about you guys? Hey.
All right. Evapco, Allendale Lane Parking Lot. Darryl, you want to start us off? And I think we're looking for final site plan approval tonight.
Chairman, you're exactly right. We look for final site plan approval, all the letters to come back with, has it, comments answered? Anything on your end, gents?
No.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Anything from the county? Okay. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
This is for the final.
Final approval of Allendale Evapco Parking Lot.
Final site plan approval.
Final site plan approval.
Right. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the final site plan for the Evapco Parking Lot.
Okay. Seconded by Brad. Further discussion? Comments? All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Take care. So it, it probably paved the morrow. See you, guys.
Ordinance in agreement for review? Anything? Not? Darryl, your report?
Okay. I have a request. The Mountain Brook plans are in. They're downstairs. If any of you had the nerve to look up to my office, see the big piles? Each pile of three is one plan. Does anybody have, um, anybody not able to take them with them tonight? Walking or anything? Is that, you all good?
I'm good.
Okay? Good. Yeah. It's going to take a while. Jim, Jim guesses at least three hours. No, just kidding. Days. So in any case, it's exciting. I, I can't wait to see what it is. But in any case, uh, we all sort of know, but you gotta go through and look at it. So speaking of Mountain Brook, um, the county, um, I sent you, I put, I put in front of you tonight, I wanted you to have it over the weekend, but it, it needed to be in color. So you can see on my, my first sheet, it was, it's basically the email of the, um, that's, that's the one with Jim, with the street names. The county has gone through and put, put the, um, the names into the system, if you will. And you notice like, like Bear is, is not allowable name. So that's pretty cool. And I broke down the three different categories as what, what's the.
Good evening, Chris.
Sorry I'm late, guys. My apologies.
All right. So in any case, just so you have it, if you guys have any comments or input over the next couple, three days that you wanted to share with me, you think, you know, I can't live with that street name being in the city or something like that, just sort of let me know. I mean, I just want to get back to them and say we've looked at it, planning commission's looked at it.
Councilman Tillman, we're, we're working on the, um, just, um, discussing the.
Street name list?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I looked at that, glanced at it. I didn't see anything that stuck out, so.
Back before your time, I think we had a big discussion, this commission about street names, uh, if they were streets, roads, alleys, wherever they were. And I thought at that time, decided we weren't going to use roads for in town as a street, as part of the street name. So we may want to reconsider some of these names. And I had a hard time on some of these names that was an alley. I guess my thought was, are they an alley or do they front the house?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that should, if they're an alley, they should be an alley.
Well, we had.
Yeah. So to me, the, the main road that goes through would be a road. The other ones would be streets.
Yes.
And if it's behind a house, it's an alley. That's what it means to me.
Very hard.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not too far off of you from, um.
Okay.
I like that.
And the main drag, which I thought was going to be part of Antrim Boulevard. So are we changing the name through this development as Denali, whatever it is, Boulevard?
Denali?
Denali Boulevard. I, I think we need to put some thought on that. And I guess my negative thought would be if it would be part of Antrim Boulevard.
That'd be delineated as such.
How would you determine would it be north or south as far as, and who decides that? Is that the, the postmaster? Or do we have some input on that?
So we do have some input there. And just kind of getting back to the comment about road, typically within the city, we name everything street these days. That's our standard convention. We do allow a circle where it's, you know, a loop road.
Or court where it's a dead end.
But we, um, right, we generally don't use road. We do use avenue on occasion, and I think that those are supposed to be, technically, I think they're supposed to have like a median at the entrance or something like that. But our existing street naming doesn't necessarily follow that convention. So we have, for example, Crimson Avenue that runs through Sarah's Choice and Meadowbrook and Mead's Crossing. That's not divided in any way. It's just a regular residential street. You know, and of course we have some older roads in the city like Roberts Mill and Carroll Heights and.
Weren't some of those because they were, we decided they would be collector streets?
Now, they may have been accepted from, you know, like Roberts Mill, portions of that may have been in the county years ago before being annexed into the city. So at that point, the name would have stuck. So, but, um, yeah. So we certainly can get back to them, you know, and suggest that they change road to street on, on most of those.
Even some of those circles were not circles.
Okay. But the post office doesn't, doesn't factor in as significantly as they used to as far as naming. Now that they do the cluster mailboxes instead of individual boxes at every, at every dwelling, they haven't been quite as, I'll say, particular. But they do, Emergency Services wants the property to be addressed with whatever the road or alley you would use to access the property. So that's why, for example, with Tony Town Crossing, the homes that front West Baltimore Street and Harney Road don't have West Baltimore Street and Harney Road addresses because to get to it by vehicle or by ambulance, say, you would use Community Place or, now I'm drawing a blank on the other, the other street name over there. So anyhow, so I think the alleys are going to need, need names for sure. I know we talked about this with Mead's Crossing, whether they need to be named or not. But my thinking is that the way Emergency Services likes things to be named, if you access the property via an alley, I expect it's going to need a name.
Yeah, I would find that confusing as a, um, you know, someone who uses an awful lot of Google Maps, um, you know, you don't want to, you don't want your guests, your daughter's baby shower showing up at the back door. You know, I would think you would want to use the street address.
Right. Right. But I'm thinking, you know, using the current convention, the long strip of homes on East Baltimore Street on the middle school side would all have Merwin Drive addresses instead of East Baltimore Street.
Right. That's just.
You know, or, or a lot of them would.
Yeah.
I think the, the address ought to be how the easiest way it is to find the property, not necessarily how you would get an emergency vehicle to it. You know, you still would, even, even with a townhouse or whatever, you're still going to pull up to the front with an emergency vehicle. You know, why would you go to the back?
All right.
So we'll be, yeah, we'll be working all that out going forward, but I guess right now we just need to nail down the names.
Yeah. So for me, I, I realize the development is called Mountain Brook, but I really think the names are really strange.
Well, they're mountain. Denali is a mountain. That's their mountain.
That's the only time. At least at Mead's Crossing, I understand where the names come from and stuff like that, but it just, I don't know. Seems strange to me.
I guess it goes on a hillside.
What? Well, I mean.
Mountain Brook's on a hillside.
I understand it's Mountain Brook, but they got St. Helens and.
Yeah.
Grand T Town and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, that's.
I agree. Yeah.
Like, like I said earlier, it wouldn't somebody from Tony Town that came up with the names. That's all I'm saying. So.
Jim, were you finished or?
Yeah. Darryl and I had discussed the idea of Denali Boulevard, you know, versus Antrim Boulevard. And, um, you know, certainly there are instances where a road changes its name when you come to an intersection. So, you know, it being named something different from the point where you would cross, assuming the road does continue eventually, um, you know, if, if it changes its name when you cross 194 and then it stays that name all the way up to 140 again, not the end of the world.
Yeah.
I would kind of like to see it be the same name all the way through, but at the same time, we don't necessarily want to create a condition like we've had in the city before where we've got two grand drives that aren't connected and we had two O'Brien avenues that weren't connected for, you know, 15 or 20 years. And I don't know that we want to repeat that situation either since we don't have a timeline for when the remaining portion of Antrim Boulevard will make it to 194.
According to, it was hard to tell, but I don't believe that there's any houses facing the Boulevard.
Right. So we shouldn't have any addressing issues. Yes.
So it shouldn't be down the road, 20 years down the road or whatever, as long as there's no house numbers, you know, connected with that address.
About that as well. Yep.
So, but like I said, I had both sides of the coin there to look at.
So our, our action for this is just to provide comments back?
Comments.
Yeah.
Just comments?
How about we give you guys a couple, three days? I mean, you're just saying it, so, um, just you, you have to.
Have a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
How are we getting along with the road going through the pump company? Did we make any progress with that?
Going through where, sir?
Going out of Emmitsburg Road.
Come on. Please, sir.
Yeah, we're, um, we have the, uh, our engineer just responded yesterday about the easement plat that Carol, our CLSI did for us. So now CLSI is going to finalize that plat and do the legal description so that we can plug that into a deed of easement. Well, the city attorney will do that part. And once, once CLSI finalizes the easement plat, they're going to also stake out the property so that Flowserve can kind of put eyes on it before they give their final approval, but that'll still have to go back through their corporate office. So it's, it's moving along.
Has the state made any comments about putting a circle in on Francisco Key Highway? Because I can't see all this traffic act closed. You have to bomb over a hill.
It's the top of the hill, isn't it? The access is top of the hill.
That's when you're coming around that.
On a flat.
Yeah.
Because Cross Mills coming off.
Right.
So it's the top of the hill.
Oh, you're talking about on the 194 side.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Fourth side, yeah. Isn't it at the top of the hill?
Getting close to the top there.
Well, that has to be reviewed for site distances to start with. And I think that that review, had that review not already been done, Jim?
Uh, my understanding from what CLSI has said is that that's the only spot along the 194 front edge where they meet the site distances.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I remember from an earlier walk with the Mountain Brook folks, that it has to be at that location because it's the only place where they can meet the site distance required.
All right. So this would be our project to get back to you with, about the names or anything else in the next couple of days or week.
Looking for.
By, by Friday so you can get back to, um.
Just the names or other comments or?
Just the road names.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Friday by noon.
And that stretches out to what? Tuesday, Wednesday?
For just our, just our opinion on what's on.
Yeah, just, you just put it out there. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna cut and paste and, you know, let, you know, we're all, you know, just discuss it. Some of this, you know, looks like it's been, been accepted, doesn't mean that they've, he goes, oh, that's the way it's going to be. So, but, um.
This means the county is okay with it, right?
Say that again, sir?
I said it just means the county is okay with it, correct?
Yeah. So according to the sheet, like, like Bear, that Bear can't happen, um, um, for, for a number of reasons. And there's, there's a lot to it. But, um, yeah, we're just, um, you put together an email saying what we like, what we don't like, and we'll go from there. I'm sure they're, they're working with us, I'm sure.
All right. We'll, we'll try to get back to you on that.
You said Bear, it's not highlighted in red, but so that's not acceptable either?
Um, we're not available is, okay. Hunter, Cook.
But Bear's not available either?
Okay. No, no, I was just, I guess I got that wrong.
Oh, okay. Okay. So just the ones in red or?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
All right.
By Friday, noon time.
Okay.
I mean, that.
Was that this Friday?
Yes.
It's clarified. Right? Like before, on a holiday weekend.
And we're silly Fridays.
Okay. Moving on with, with your report.
So I spoke with, um, no, I communicated with, um, the people at Sheets. It's now in the attorney's office for the final things we need to do. And hopefully we get news again, still more and stuff and such. I mean, it's been two years trying to get, you know, to where we were three years ago. So in any case, so I'm having faith that, um, the Sheets people will, you know, just sign their document and get their money. But the last email was that it is in their attorney's office and then, um, we're getting things finalized hopefully. I've asked Barry to pull the two Evapco projects that are open on our agenda. I haven't located, I haven't looked for them yet to see which projects there are, but hopefully it's something, uh, for the age of the projects, I can't imagine there's any really pressing. Just a little nervous like. What else? City manager, Y-Prex, um, Director Meish, myself, met with the people at Cure Leaf last week. Um, they're looking at, um, expanding their, um, um, their business. Still very preliminary, I haven't seen any drawings or anything.
With whom?
Cure Leaf, beside the, um, the, um, medicinal marijuana.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So that's coming. Uh, I know that, um, uh, we've had a number of talks about water recharge, which we had a big deal, um, I, um, city manager Y-Prector, CDM Smith, um, city attorney Gallow, um, um, all available staff, we're working on water recharge, um, is, is the next big thing we're gonna need, um, for our future in terms of development.
So what, what does working on it mean? So, uh, we're fixing the underground sewers and water lines, right? I mean, some of those projects are working towards that?
Well, yeah, yeah, I guess so, no, they are. The, the seven point one million dollars that the city was wise enough, and I'm sure, um, um, city manager Y-Prector, I don't wanna embarrass him or anything, but he's always been into, um, um, the responsible thing. All water systems leak, alright, all. And I think the numbers, I thought it was twenty percent, but is, the, the goal is the tighter of the better. You're not treating, um, you know, you're not treating a storm drain at the plant, those kinds of things. And just keep in mind now, the, the benefit of what happened on Broad is gonna happen in a few years on George and then over on Middle, pretty soon you're knocking the heck out of our terracotta inventory, huge, so.
So we're not gonna get hit on these storms of infiltration and over.
And leaking water, yeah, so there's all kinds of benefits. In fact, Jim, catch me if I fall, there's a, I don't think, so we did such a, um, great, we had such benefit from our last large project that it changed the numbers, um, to the good, but we have to correct and catch that good. Um, so that's about as technical as I can get on it, Jim, if there's anything you wanted to, um, part on that?
So with, with the sewer rehabilitation projects we've done, um, we've kind of flip-flopped things as far as like areas of concern. Prior to doing those projects and having the, the, um, Rescue Plan Act money's available to do those, the big concern for me was the sewer side of things. But we were, we were losing about half of our capacity to inflow and infiltration during rain events. So between doing Robertson Road and Broad Street, the interceptor line behind the elementary school, Fairground Avenue, Sewer Rehab, um, we now have sewer capacity to spare, um, for development that's in the pipeline right now. Now the big concern, and it's not, it's really more a numbers problem, is the water recharge. So in, I'll say, in the late nineties, the state rethought how they would allocate, um, water permits. So we can only count rain that falls on the city limits or on acreage that we control somehow to count towards recharging our aquifers for our wells. Most of the area around here recharges at about two hundred and ninety gallons per acre per day. We allocate two hundred and fifty gallons per day for every single family house. So we wanna put three to four houses on an acre in our ten thousand, and so the numbers obviously don't add up, so we need to go out and acquire recharge easements in order to be allowed to, to then approach MDE to increase our allocations for our wells, for what we can pump. So we have capacity at some of our wells, but we don't have the recharge acreage to basically offset our additional pumping. So that is likely going to be a pricey endeavor. And if, if a farm, you know, within our aquifer can go into agricultural preservation at seven or eight thousand dollars an acre, we need to figure out how can we be competitive with that? You know, what, what will entice them to do a recharge easement with us rather than go into AgPress? When the county does an agricultural preservation easement, um, through a county easement rather than the Maryland easement, they do incorporate a recharge component with that, I believe they get seventy-five percent of the recharge of, of the property as part of that easement. And we are working with the county, actually, we have a meeting next week with them where they have offered to dedicate some recharge that they've acquired with these easements in the past to help with our recharge numbers. But they don't have enough to, uh, to facilitate additional development. Uh, the state right now says we have a recharge deficit in the city and the county can kind of help us with that deficit, but we're still gonna need to find more acreage and get acreage under easement for recharge before we can see big projects like Mountain Brook or the Hoffman property or anything that's, you know, um, I, I've, I've worked up the numbers, I don't have them right in front of me tonight, but, um, we don't have water capacity for, you know, for Mountain Brook farms right now. We do have sewer capacity, if you'd asked me two years ago, we wouldn't have had anything. So we've made great progress on the sewer stuff by tightening up our system, but on the water side.
But we knew that, we knew we were gonna see answers like that when all that was happening.
We were, we were optimistic, um, and, um, our concern was that we would see, that we would quickly see diminishing returns because we picked, you know, the projects that we thought were gonna, you know, give us the biggest bang for the buck, like the elementary school, right next to a creek, you know, flood, an area that floods and, um, you know, old terracotta line. So it's like the perfect storm for inflow and infiltration, so we put that first. You know, we expected that as we moved away from those types of projects, we would see less benefit, you know, with the projects, but the numbers have still been trending very, very well in the right direction. Um, you know, even with Fairground Avenue and Robertson Road, um, you know, I, I'm not sure if any of you have seen the, the, there's a manhole at the corner of Broad Street and East Baltimore Street that during heavy rains would surcharge pretty regularly. Most of you have probably driven by it, seen it. Um, so that doesn't happen anymore. You know, but that just gives you an idea of the magnitude of, of how many gallons of, of rainwater were getting flooded into the sewer system. So, um, anyhow, tremendous progress.
Hey, Jim?
Yep.
Jim, do we, do we have an idea, uh, how much loss we have in our water system? And does that play any, any part in, uh, our recharge dilemma? Or can, you know, can we make back some of those allowable units by tightening up the water system?
We've had some, uh, some substantial leaks in, in recent years, but, um, the system is tighter than it was. When we do Westview Drive, we expect there will be, uh, another, uh, drop in our pumping numbers because we suspect that while we're not detecting any leaks, that line's been so cobbled together over the years that, that we suspect that we are losing some water there. We shoot for under ten percent. I think the last time I talked with, uh, our public works director, I think we were at like eleven or twelve. So in, in years past, before Streetscape, we were above twenty percent loss. So Streetscape and that new water line really tightened us up a lot, that's where.
Right, so those would have been.
We were losing tremendous amount.
Yeah, if those would have been cast lines with leaded joints, right?
I think part of it was, but, um, you know, we've, tightening the system also allowed us to build out the remaining phases of Meadow Brook and Meads Crossing without going to MDE to increase our, our.
Right.
Allocation permits for our wells. So tightening the system really made a big difference and allowed us to let those projects go forward. But right now we're down to about thirty-seven thousand gallons a day.
It's very far, right?
We still have that list, so when you had the, uh, lines all scoped or camered and you took the worst ones.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we did Roberts Mill, that was a rough one, and Fairground and all that.
Right.
Is there any other ones out there or we, we hitting the?
Yeah.
It's gotta be, cause we, how many, how many feet was still out there that? I see Daryl's kinda making a, I understand, I'm just saying, we're knocking them off, like you said.
Yeah, um, so this year we are, um, hopefully next month we will award a bid for the Sewer Rehab Phase Two, which is going to be, uh, West Baltimore Street. Um, and this isn't in the street, it's a line that runs in people's backyards on the, uh, Memorial Drive side of West Baltimore Street, uh, pretty much from the big apartment building deck and row building on the corner all the way down to the park. So that's gonna be relined and sections replaced where, where we can't line it because there's a sag or something like that. And then there are two sections of line in Memorial Park that we're also, um, hopefully going to award a bid in September for. I don't remember how many thousand feet that is, I, I wanna say it's, it's, um, about, I think it's over a thousand feet of each relining and replacement. And that also touches some lines that, that go under, um, West Baltimore Street by Harney Road. Uh, so we've got that scheduled for this year, then we've got George Street and Middle Street. And we'll be doing, I, I believe we'll be doing, you know, what we did on Broad Street, new water lines, sewer line, um, everything, rebuild the street as necessary. After that, I think the shift goes to, um, the Cloverberry and Tony Village, um, not Tony, yeah, Cloverberry and Tony Village courts, so, um, cherry oak, chestnut berry, red tulip, daisy, um, those courts will be towards the end of the rehab, so, but, but that's also, um, older line that we need to get rid of. So hopefully we will, um, improve our expertise as we go along with these projects, um, because the one in the townhouse communities, we expect to be very challenging because of the density and everything there. And we, we know that things were not done to city specifications even when it was built because it was all supposed to be private back then. So we expect that to be kind of an adventure. So, but that's, you know, so we'll be doing these projects probably for the next five years.
Jim, uh, Jim, those projects, the construction dates went back to the seventies, right? With those townhouse developments?
Uh, the townhouses, I wanna say were in the early eighties, Daryl, do you have any recollection?
So they should be plastic pipe, it shouldn't be an issue like we have with the terracotta, that should all be plastic pipe, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how late they continued to use terracotta.
And maybe seventy-eight, actually.
Yeah, seventy-eight sounds about right.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I can't, I, I, I've never put in plastic pipe and I've been doing this since nineteen eighty, so. I mean, I've never put in terracotta, you know, everything's plastic for as long as I've been in the business, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving, moving forward.
Thanks, thanks for that information, Rob.
Thanks, sir. So we have, um, two BZA hearings we heard September seventeenth. September seventeenth at six thirty. That's where the side yard variance. September seventeenth at six thirty.
And that'll be, will that be here?
Yeah. And then, um, I just wanna reiterate, both the senior center and Kenny's will have landscaping corrected, properly approved, landscaping plans. So here's how this works. Chairman Parker went by to look at Smalls', um, setbacks. When he's looking at the setbacks, I believe it's the story you told me.
Yeah.
I'm gonna embellish a little bit because I get bored. So, but here he noticed that the landscaping was not done at the senior center. And so a simple call down to Jonathan Bowman, um, down at County, he was on it. I mean, he, he's, um, he's already spoken to the people, I've spoken to the people that are gonna be replanting. And, um, so it's just that simple, guys, I mean, this stuff, you know, thankfully Verizon's gonna get, be getting a facelift, or I would be addressing that, um, landscaping again between the Verizon building and what is Tony's affordable store. Yeah, this stuff, it says right, it's, it's forever.
Yeah.
So, and then Kenny's, there's some stuff that was not planted whenever it was originally, um, landscaped and some of the shr- and some of the things have died. Sir?
Jay, any legal update, Jay?
Yeah, I have a few things, um, they, they stole some of my thunder about the Flowserve right-of-way that's, uh, been negotiated out. But, uh, since, yeah, I was gonna start with that, so you already know that. And then I wanna show you how that piece of the puzzle has to fit in with everything else and your role in it. So the city manager asked me to talk to the Mountain Brook attorney, uh, to start discussions about a developer's rights and responsibilities agreement. And a developer's rights and responsibilities agreement is different than like a public works agreement, we're very familiar with those. A public works agreement basically says they're gonna build the public improvements on the plans that you approve when it's all said and done, and they're gonna secure that building with bonds and, uh, security so that if they don't do it right, we have the money to go in and fix it. So that, that all happens no matter what. But a developer's rights and responsibility agreement locks a developer into certain promises that they have to make to the city and it locks the city into promises that we make to them. And these aren't your promises, like, these aren't like what you'll do to approve a road or a subdivision or a number of units or things like that. It's more of the promises for the things we have to provide. So I'm gonna make up the numbers, let's say Mountain Brook needed, uh, three hundred water taps and sewer taps. We'd be promising that we're gonna give them to them, we'll reserve, you know, if we don't have it to give, we can't give it, but we'll reserve them, make sure they're next in line, for example. And this is all very basic, this, um, it's more complicated than this, but you get the idea. So we would be promising certain things to them and then they would have to promise certain things to us, things that they normally would not have to do. And so obviously they have to pave their streets, they gotta build all the water and sewer and things like that. But the thing that they would not normally have to do is build their major collector road as what we've just been calling the bypass. And that would involve, uh, the, the stream crossing, that would involve the entire, uh, improvements to the Flowserve property, right? Cause it's gonna be on Flowserve property where it hits one forty. Those types of things, uh, the negotiations are, hey, mister developer, in order for us to agree to promise to let you do your development, you have to do these things for us. And so this developer's rights and responsibilities agreement, which we call a DARA, has to be negotiated because it's got lots and lots of moving parts. And right now, all we have is just an idea. How you all fit into that is once it's negotiated, it gets adopted by the council. But before the council can adopt it, it's gotta come to your body and your body has a public hearing on it. And while you're not really focused on the details, of course, we want your input because you deal with this the best, what you're making sure is that the DARA carries out the intent of the comprehensive plan. So normally that's like the, a rubber stamp, right? This is the zoned a certain amount, the houses are a certain amount. But in this situation, the comprehensive plan has a transportation element, which is the road that we've been talking about here. So it's gonna be important that you all make sure that it actually carries out the intent of this road being built and all the parts that go with it. So that's the overview, there's lots of little sticky details because everybody can say they have to build the road and the, the agreement would be like one page long and you wouldn't need me to do that. But of course, they're gonna build their development in phases. So the first phase are gonna be all the easy things to build, right? The, the ones that are by one ninety-four. The second phase, or whatever the next plan they call, will be the harder things to build on the other side of the wetlands. And we've learned the hard way with the O'Brien Bridge, that we don't like to put off the big improvements to the end because sometimes it ends before the big improvement happens. And then what do we do? We end up building it ourselves, O'Brien Bridge, right? So this DARA helps us lock that into a timing where obviously it's not gonna make sense for them to build that on day one, how could they get to it? But we don't want this build on the last day either. So that's just an example. You'll see this, um, happening over the next several months, this isn't a quick thing. This is a lot of back and forth to figure out what the details are. But I would imagine, um, this is gonna have to come to you before the expiration of this, um, comprehensive plan, that, or the, excuse me, the concept plan that you just approved last month. So we're already on a clock, it's gonna happen within the next eleven months. We'd like it to be nailed down before the preliminary plan gets approved so that they can't back out of any obligations they may have to us. If we wanted to, we could wait until the preliminary plan gets approved and we could do it all at the same time, but we don't wanna wait until then to start talking about doing. So I know that's a lot of legal mumbo jumbo talking in circles, but it really is a critical element that, uh, the city's gonna use to make sure the developer does what we want them to do.
Which a lot, a lot on everyone in a short period of time, really. It's a lot, a lot on everyone in a short period of time, really.
It's amazing, you know, this has been talked about for years and years and years and years. And like anything else, I guess, now it's right here and you can't believe it's ready to go and we got all this work to do. But that's, that's kind of where we are, so.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody have any questions for Jay? Thanks, Jay.
Great.
All right. County.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. The first two things are the water and sewer and the housing study. No new updates on those, they're just continuing through the cycles. For the tax amendments, already brought up the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act that was passed at the state level earlier this year. Legislation will go into effect at the beginning of next year, so we're just trying to catch up with that legislation to make sure we have what we need in place when that goes. And then the solar site design requirements also, we just, I brought that to you last month and we just have more meetings on that so that if the Public Service Commission does approve solar projects on ag land, then we do have some bulk requirements to go with this because it's not an approved use on ag land in the county. And then updates for the master plan, as we're in the cycle as well. We will have our second meeting with the county commissioners on the twenty-ninth for going over with, looking for some guidance. And then there'll be a joint meeting with the planning commission and the county commissioners on the seventeenth, sorry, of September to go over what, just direction and make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. Any questions? Oh, no question? Oh, okay. Thank you.
It was a surprise to us, too. All right. Moving into old business. The comp plan update meeting. Daryl or Jim, either one of you want to pick those three items up?
So the comp plan and key member interview, whereas they were updated, the only thing we don't have is a map plan, a map rather, for the community survey. And so basically Craig had said that we would get more, and I agree, we would get more information from people if we didn't single them out, you know, first and last name, street address. So you go a little bit more discreet and go, and I haven't seen the chart yet, we did discuss this a little on Friday, your common sense things like, I think, Carol, this would sort of be its own little world, as a, for instance, New Meads and newer. Let's also say something. But Meads and, not Mountain Brook.
Meadow Brook.
Meadow Brook, thank you, sir. So that would be newer. Because you have some sections of Meadow Brook that are a lot older, the roads in that area. You guys been across there, been there across some of the roads in older Meadow Brook? And Copperfield, it's a little, little, little challenging. So in any case, as a, for instance, so that would be a nice thing for us to have, would be nice were we were open, we would have it done today, but didn't happen. But the key person interview and the community survey, I think is, this reflects what we were, what we discussed thus far. The map is the only thing we don't have to finish out the community survey. So I don't know how you guys want to do that part.
The map, we just need to add the map, period, right?
But it will be sectioned out, broken down somehow. You know, this is what Craig and Emily do for a living, so hopefully, and he's taken some time already to look at breaking down how the map is.
So this evening, do we want to approve what was, what's before us, what we talked about last Tuesday? The community survey and to keep, so we have it on record, this is what we talked about, this is what we discussed. Let's get an approval, let's get a motion on it.
That's right.
And move forward. Is that what we're looking for? I think we should be.
Yeah. I think they're updated as we discussed there. I guess I have questions on how they're going to get implemented and stuff like that, but as far as the document, I'm good with that.
Both sections again, it took me longer this time than the first time we were through, but it's still, you got to put some thought into it. So I think this is, this is what we should start with and I'll entertain a motion that this is what we're going to accept as the survey, put in any type of motion that.
I want to make a motion. Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve the community survey and the key person.
So Bill made that motion, is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, Dan seconded. Any further discussion? Chris, any more comments or anything?
No.
Okay, that's, okay.
The only thing, since you asked, you know, we ought to, we ought to approve a list of the interviewees on the key person interviews. You know, Daryl and I talked about a couple of people we ought to add to the list that we kind of came up with last Tuesday. And we might, should maybe vote on that or get a look at that before we actually start that process.
Okay, good.
Did we finalize that list or?
We haven't finalized.
Yes, I suggest we just stay on these two first.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So no further discussion, all those in favor of motion? Forty key personnel interview and the community survey signify by saying aye. I got the thumbs up for Chris.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carrie, unanimous. So what is the next step for Tuesday night?
So one thing to clarify, this map comes out, all right? Craig answered to me, I'll shoot it to you, there will be no ability to, you know, we don't want to discuss it in threes, but there's going to be a map, okay? And it's going to be the map, same app you see when you log into a planning commission meeting on YouTube, you know, but it's not the black thing, okay? So that map is going to be for people to, on that questionnaire, say, you know, basically, where do you live? And you put down an A or a two or whatever the breakdowns are going to be. I can't imagine that being so, you know, controversial that we can't sort of agree that that could go into this and then our questionnaires are available.
Okay.
Is there anything that we need on these?
I'm good.
So the map, so do we want to amend that or are we good? All right, so the map will come in, hopefully it's not, you know, it's, yeah, and I'll shoot it to you.
Okay.
But we know right now, leaving this room, that's what we're going to be using.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
So just wanted to make, I was just trying to make sure it's the right time here. So I guess I wanted everybody to think about it so we can talk about it next Tuesday. So when we do the key person interview, I always have a hard time with, you know, checking one, two, or three or checking this, doing this kind of survey because it doesn't always, you can't always convey what your intent really is because you got to pick one of the blocks on there. I mean, there are some places in there where you can write a paragraph. But when we do the key person interview, my suggestion, and just for you guys to think about, is that you, we actually ask them questions like, what do you envision downtown Tawny Town to be like? Tell me what your vision is. Or what is your vision for future development in Tawny Town? Just an open-ended, or two, three, four, open-ended questions. And they would be for our key person, you know, people that are embedded in the town or been in the town or have, you know, you know, they're concerned about the town. But I think it would be good just to get, allow them to give us some free form answers. So just something for you guys to speak about.
I think, I think we ought to send them a copy of this in advance so that they know what we're going to be coming to talk to them about. And that gives them an opportunity to think about some of these things before we actually sit down face to face.
So will the interviews be done by the Arrow or what's the name of our company? Who's going to do the interviews?
Yeah, who's going to be that?
I don't think that's been determined.
Okay. I mean.
What do you think about splitting up the list among the members?
So I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, I think it would, I mean, there's advantages to splitting it up and there's advantages to us all ganging up on the person at the same time so we hear the same things. But I don't want to make the people nervous or anything like that.
I think we'll want some consistency across it. I, I was expecting this to be either staff or the consultant or a combination of the two. I think that having, using that dividing conquer approach while, while it certainly, you know, many hands make light work and all, it could lose some consistency, you know, if, if everybody has like a different way of approaching an interview.
Yep.
You may not glean the same sort of information. So I think that having everyone interviewed by the same, the same panel or the same person is probably the best way to go just for consistency so that you get the same.
I can get behind that. Would there, would there be opportunity for the commission or could we sit in on a couple of the interviews or, I mean, I'd sit there and try to keep my mouth shut, but I mean, it'd be interesting, maybe.
I think the commission should be involved in this process. I don't, I, you know, I think it loses some of the steam that we're trying to put to it if we just send the staff out to do it. You know, where's our commitment to that if that's what we're doing?
Yeah, I think we should be part of it, maybe not necessarily as a group, but maybe the freedom of setting in on it. Again, it's something we can talk about, you guys can work out the details and if it doesn't work out away.
Imagine it's going to take some time to set, set these up. So, you know, it's not like we're going to be doing them all tomorrow. We'll talk with, with Greg and Emily and, you know, see what.
We got to tell them.
Yeah, just. With them, the thoughts from tonight and we'll come up with a plan.
We were talking September and October for.
Yes. Talking about six months, six, or six weeks.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, so, yeah.
The survey, September, October for survey, so September's next week.
Right.
The maps, well, it looks like we have, we have the, the, we have the community survey, that's done. So you guys, whatever, you know, let's look at some upcoming events. Tiffany shared me a really awesome email which I've not responded to you yet because I'm just trying to catch up. But great examples of how we can use some of the sports events, you know, things, of course, the Lorraine has gone down the park, school events, you know, yes, there's, just, just the way you guys did the housing study is perfect. So, but if we can get these surveys out and get them rolling, I guess we need to get the, our little cards made up so we can get them out that way, too.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see the, the survey from the, the housing study.
Yeah.
Surveys make me nervous because I, I think they can be twisted very easily. And if you don't know how they were, how the questions were created or how it was tallied, I just, I'm not trusting.
Well, so one of the, I was at the Trinity Church with Tiffany and their consultant and I watched different people, you know, work on or discuss that housing survey. And, you know, of the three or four people that I saw, you know, and they had an example up there where, you know, how you rated things. And I don't, I can't remember all the different ratings, but they were rather diverse. And, you know, there's, there's no right or wrong, it's where you're at and how you feel, how you're affected, what is your day like? So that's where, that's where these things come in.
Yep.
So, yeah.
I don't have a better way, I'm just not sure I like it.
All right, that should pretty much cover that part of it, right? All right. New business?
Well, I have nothing for new business, sir, but can we go back to whoever was selected for the key personnel?
Yes.
Figure out a way to get that nailed down.
Okay. I thought that's something you were working on already.
Well, so we've all talked about people, Jim, that we have, I mean, a pretty good list.
I thought that we had gotten a list of about ten or eleven.
Fifteen or seventeen people, wasn't it?
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Getting, it was getting bigger and bigger as the more we talked, which, which was kind of exceeding the scope of what.
Craig was saying, let's, let's limit it at fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
I think fifteen's a low number, but that's okay.
It doesn't.
You're not going to get another chance to ask somebody questions.
Nope.
And what, the information we're learning, we're going to make decisions on, so I mean.
And, and keep in mind, we may not get positive response to being interviewed from all of the people that we'd like to talk to. So we may have a list of twenty people, if we get fifteen of them, that may be really good. Yeah, I have, I made notes and I have my list here, so I can.
Oh, you were writing, yeah, I saw you were writing them down, that's why I didn't.
You went down to get a list, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have something else?
I got a different question that we can cover while we're waiting for him if you want, because I think Daryl better answer it real quick.
I'm not sure what that means.
So we got a letter that's, it was, looks like it was for Tawny Supply, but in the first sentence it says Recovery Tawny Town.
It's, that, in the paragraph, that's wrong, it's for, it's for the subject matter.
Okay. That's what I thought based on reading it.
I knew you'd catch that.
Highlighted that, too, so.
So I called, I called down to the author of that letter and he was stunned because I'm telling you, when you see his name on reviews.
Twenty to the twenty-second is the annual planning conference.
Is that the one down in Turf Valley?
Yeah, Turf Valley, which is right down the road here from us. So I guess when we get more information, I'm sure we don't have an agenda yet because that's usually, we're lucky to have.
Yeah, yeah, this is a, one time of year, three day event. First day is normally the two, you know, new commissioners in Open Meetings Act, some type of event that evening or afternoon, whatever. And I don't, so there are some pretty good classes, I've seen a couple, but no real itinerary yet. Also, the dating, if it's correct, is a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Right.
So just thinking about that.
Well, that's fine if we can always get out by noon on Tuesday to make it in time for Tuesday night's meeting here at six thirty.
Okay. Man, you're making.
Only an hour.
Wow, yeah.
You've got a lot of time on your hands.
He's just playing ahead.
So then one more thing, you guys see the letter in there about the, the police station's shed?
Yes.
So because it's a commercial space. Operated by turning, twisting, pulling, so that's pretty cool. So that's another thing that, that entity does.
I thought that was a storage shed for, for police department.
It is.
Period. So why would the public have the need or the privilege to go into it?
Well, so it's hard to. Well, so it's hard to argue with the gentleman who explained it to me. But, you know, basically, it's a, it's city property, it's a city-owned building and it, it should follow all the requirements of any other ADA property.
Alright.
Okay, but it wouldn't, I think the door was the, like, the hardest thing to do, right? I mean, that was...
Yeah, that doesn't sound cheap.
Well, a ramp, it's gonna be two ramps because the ramp's gonna come out into the driveway. So the ramps are gonna be the biggest issue unless they get a ramp built into the doorway.
Special knowledge or effort?
Yes, basically a door like that, push bar. Lock with no panic bar.
Alright, Jim?
So the list I had from last week, and for the organizations, you know, I figured we would just start at the, the top of the food chain, you know, and see if the, like, the chairperson or president or whatever the term for that particular organization might be. You know, or the person in charge of the local sites for the industrial connections. Anyhow, so we had Chamber of Commerce, Caring and Sharing, which is the conglomeration of all the churches in the community, Flowserve, Evapco. We had talked about Cure Leaf, but that might put us over, but we can certainly, we have contacts there. The Fire Company, Police Department, Public Works, Economic Development, Heritage Museum Association. And not sure who we would go to there because they're kind of too, unless we're gonna do one for each of those. Because the Heritage Committee is different than the Museum Association, I guess. Where they each have their own chair, I believe. Let's see. Although I guess, I guess they're, yeah, nonprofit probably is one entity.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Anyhow, Senior Center Director and then four HOAs. So we've got Carroll Vista, Meadowbrook, Meads Crossing and Creekside.
Creekside, yeah.
Are all active HOAs. So that would put us at fourteen people, and Craig was saying about fifteen people, ten to fif, ten to fifteen.
How about the people that are running Tony Town Crossing?
Um, I don't know.
Not sure that's big enough.
There's thirty-six dwellings there, that's not a very big...
You'll email that out to us, that list? You'll send that list out to us?
Okay, sure. But that, that would be fourteen people. Actually fifteen if we count, include Cure Leaf.
How, how are we gonna get the opinion of the actual town council? Are they gonna be, just gonna hand them a form and let them fill it out? Or are they gonna be interviewed or...
Well, they will certainly have opportunities throughout the process, but we didn't really talk about...
Yeah, no, we didn't, yeah. I, I was, I mean...
About the elected officials being the recipients of that key person interview.
I'd be interested in hearing their opinion, I mean, they've been, I mean, they know what's happening around town. You know, I'd value their opinion, I've seen good things and bad things happen, so, um... I'd value their opinion.
Each council member?
Each council member. Yeah, for, you know, like, for the fire company, we might send in one for the fire company. But for the council, I would expect to get one from, I would think they would be interested enough that they would all be happy to provide an interview.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you, you and... Excuse me, didn't you and Chris come up with other ones, too, or...
I think just brainstorming, I mean, I think that...
I was just curious because we were...
Two from the chamber.
Well, we were talking about, we were trying to get twenty so we can get at least, we're not gonna get all, like Chris said, we're not gonna get them all.
Well, why don't we, why don't we start with these?
That's fine.
See how many of them we get, if we get them all, then we're good.
We're good.
Then, right, so...
So are we using that list?
As of now, yes.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Right. The, the, the ones that I had wanted to talk about adding, you know, two of the larger, long-time businesses and large, and fairly sizable employers here in town. One is the bowling alley, the other is Antrim eighteen twenty-four. You know, they, they both have long histories here in town, they both employ a lot of people that are here local. And then Daryl and I spoke about, uh, real estate associated professionals, one being perhaps Stephanie Myers or one of the other big real estate agents here in town who clearly would have the pulse of what people think. And then perhaps one or more of the larger property owners here in the downtown area.
Good, wait, just wait and see what we have.
So... But those were the suggestions that we...
Okay. Anything else on this?
So we're gonna go with the fifteen or so that Jim had pulled, pulled up? Mayor and City Council or not?
I see the council should get one as an, as an individual. Would they, would, would you respond different as an individual than what you would be as...
Would I? No, I would not.
I would not either, so that's why I'd say if, if everyone gets it as an individual, you would have the input.
Would we want to give them the community survey, but ask them to identify themselves? So that we know the perspective it's coming from? Like, ask, ask each council member to, you know, do the community survey, but to put their name with it?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, I, I just, I, I guess I really don't...
I'd rather not have the name, I would think.
I personally think if I was a town council, I would want you to have my opinion because that's my job, that's why I'm up here and...
Well, yeah, they get a special position at that scenario as it goes through the approval, so...
Yeah, but the, the whole point of doing the interview is for us to get information so we can get it right the first time. I mean, that never happens, but, I mean, if, the, the whole point of the interview is for us to get, get moving in the right direction.
I'm, the, the likelihood of getting a huge response is, is slim. So, you know, it, it is likely that we're going to be having to make a lot of decisions with very little...
Absolutely.
When, when you think about the size of the city and the number of people that reside here. We'll wait and see, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised, but, you know, I, I think we're not expecting, you know, much greater response on the surveys than we see with municipal elections.
That's exactly what I think.
I absolutely agree with you, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't put forth the effort.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
There, we need to provide the opportunity.
I've been hoping the last few months, last couple of months, that this is because of holidays and people on vacation and what have, what have you. And I'm, you know, it's sort of like the budget. Remember sitting on this side or that side, Jim, or wherever downstairs? And you look, and you're sitting on the council's budget and there's one, two, sometimes three people every year. Every year, and, you know, and it's important that people don't lose their ability to have an opinion. I used to think as an elected official, but where are you at? You know, this is, this is our chance, this is a reset right here, this is a reset. And we're not here. So then whimsically, a couple of years ago, you were talking to somebody and you had this strong opinion about why this is messed up or whatever, and you're gonna stand there with that special feeling of where you at two years ago.
Right.
You know, it's, it's frustrating. I'm hoping you don't have it. Vener, vener.
Okay. Anything else, anything more new business? If not, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Made, read, seconded by Bill. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Gotcha, thank you.